For those that are tuning in, this is the City of Iowa City Work Session on January 5th, 2021. And I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'm gonna have someone to reach out to Mayor Pro Tem to make sure that she has sign on. Kelly, if your office can do that, that'd be great. Thank you. And we're gonna start. First, Happy New Year, everyone. Happy to see you here. And Happy New Year to everyone in Iowa City. We're gonna start our work session today. We're starting early. Normally, we start at 5:00 PM, but we're gonna start with the capital improvement projects. And because this will be a longer session, councilors, I think if you are needing to take a break, if you want us to stop, you might wanna send me a message. Otherwise, I think just feel free to take a break and then come back whenever. So we're gonna get started with our capital improvement projects. Plan and I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney, city manager, Jeff Fron.
And I'm probably promptly gonna turn it over to our finance director and public works director who are gonna lead you through the presentations tonight.
Mr. Mayor Council, a good afternoon and Happy New Year. I'm Ron Canucki, Public Works Director. Today, we are happy to present the Iowa City Capital Improvements Plan. We will use the Esri Storybook Platform for the presentation. With that, I'd like to thank the Engineering Division and in particular, Kili and Log Head for producing the final presentation for us. The Capital Improvements Fund can be found in the proposed budget document, starting on page 481. Today, we have five objectives. The first, Dennis will go over the plan development process and the fund summary. A second staff will discuss the ongoing projects. These are projects that are not included in the CIP document, but continue to have work completed on them. There will be 11 projects that'll be discussed. Third, staff will discuss the annual projects. There are 17 recurring projects that are identified in the CIP. Fourth staff will discuss the 125 projects that are identified in the five-year program. To try to save some time in this presentation, we've attempted to condense some of those projects that are similar in nature or are gonna be completed at the same facility to try to save some time in regards to that. And with that being the case, the projects as they're presented won't necessarily follow directly right along with the capital program as it's shown in the budget document. And then the final objective that we have is to discuss projects that are considered to be on the radar. These are projects that are on the unfunded list and staff believe council should be aware of. We appreciate this opportunity to present the 2021-2025 CIP. With that, I'll turn it over to Dennis.
Hello, good afternoon. And I believe they're gonna bring up the Esri presentation here. And I've got about four slides to cover essentially to walk you through the the process of how we pull the CIP program together. You know, how we gather the forms of the data and compile it, review it, and then also to give you a broad overview of what is all encompassed in the program, where the dollars are going to and where they're coming from, and how this program kinda lays out from a big picture over the next five years. So the first slide. This is the the actual dates that we put together when we when we start the program and put together a calendar of dates. This starts about a month before our annual budget process, and it actually overlaps our budget process. And then at the end, we bring them both together. So September 1st, the Finance Department sends out forms to the departments. And this is really to update projects that are in the program and for also gives them a chance to submit new projects into the program. And we give them about three to four weeks to to compile and update those programs. And then when October hits, we produce that initial report. There is a committee that made up a variety of different departments that meets. We begin to review those projects, see how they overlap, how they over, how they work together. We gather that input. And then we we take a first massage or amendment to that report and to the program. And then we come back and issue an amended or a follow-up program. Once again, then later in October, that committee meets, we review that amended program and kind of come up with what I would say is a final program. It's 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 usually might be tweaked or amended as we go through the budget process to make sure that the funding sources and the operating budget mesh with the capital program and that they both work together. And generally, we do that in early December where we we bring that capital budget, capital program, merge it with the operating program. And then we submit that to the city council. This year is on December 18th is when that kinda goes out the door as part of that budget book. So the next slide. Is gives you an idea of where that spending is at. And you can see that the streets funding is is by far the the largest category of of capital spending and and that's been that way for for years. That's that's nothing new. We do have some fairly substantial projects, what you'll hear about tonight. One being the Dodge Street Reconstruction is in there for about 17 million of that 82 million. Then we also have a planned project about five years out for Taft Avenue of about 11 million. And then our annual street rehab, pavement rehab comes to about 11 and a half million. So those those are the biggest chunks out of that 82 million. The next largest area that we are capital planning is wastewater. At 23 million, so you can see it's a pretty large step down from from streets funding to the next one is just sewers. And the biggest part of that is gonna be the Digestor Complex Reconstruction in a couple of years of just under $8 million. So then one project makes up about one-third of of the full capital planning for the sewer fund, the wastewater fund. And then the third largest in this pie is transit, which is a little bit skewed because 20 million of that 20.4 million is one project, which is our transit maintenance facility, which right now we're we're have slotted out a couple of years and also is really contingent on receiving federal funding. And then the next largest is park maintenance at 14 million. And then from down there, it drops down pretty quick into smaller, smaller pieces. And so how we go about funding these projects, which will be our next slide. This this tells you where the money is coming from. So this is for all the five-year program. And the biggest slice there is the GO bonds at $66 million. And so for the next five years, we are projecting to issue $66 million in in general obligation debt. And that primarily goes towards streets and parks where the biggest sources of funding and probably next would be fire trucks after streets and parks. And then the next largest sources of funding for the the capital plan or the capital projects you're gonna hear about on this afternoon are are federal and state grants. So they make up a significant portion of our overall capital program. And the federal grant portion there does include $16 million for the transit maintenance facility. So that is funding we haven't had much luck in getting the last few years, but hopefully hopefully we'll have our time here and we'll get funding and that project will take place. And then the next slide, just after that, it's almost a tie related between road use tax and wastewater. You know, wastewater is one of those business-type funds that sell funds through through fees and charging for services. And so there's other than revenue debt. They really pay for their projects as they go. Then and for the road use, the bulk of that road use dollars goes towards the annual payment rehab. And also funds for other things such as our ADA crossings program and and our traffic signal program. But the bulk of that goes towards pavement rehabilitation. And then the last slide I'm gonna cover tonight or this afternoon, sorry, is and how that program lays out over the next five years. It's it's a little bit of a unusual layout. Typically, you see the the highest dollar is being planned in in the first year and then they taper downward and kind of a downward slide. What this tells you is we have a number of large, significant projects that we are planning ahead for in 23, 24, 25. So, you know, we do have a large number of dollars planned and Ron mentioned there's 125 projects out there in 21 and 22, but in 23, that's where the $20 million transit facility is currently programmed at. And also that $8 million Digestor Complex is planned in that 2023 year as well. So you can see that we have a number of very large projects planned in in the middle of this program. And then in 20, in 2024, we've got almost $16 million planned for the Dodge Street Reconstruction. So those large projects have kinda pushed the dollars in these outer years up. And then in 2025, we got $10 million planned for the Taft Avenue Reconstruction. And then also out there is a referendum-based project of roughly $6 million for the City Park Pool. So that kinda what causes this to be a little bit unusual pattern for for our capital program. But it also tells us that that there's a lot coming down the road here and and there's a lot to look ahead to here. So that's the last slide I was gonna cover and I'm gonna hand off to Jason and he's gonna start taking you through the projects and he'll go through with each of the divisions to talk about those projects. And and then if there's questions later on in regards to financing of the program, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good afternoon. Jason Havel, City Engineer. So I'll start things off, as Ron mentioned, with ongoing projects. So just a reminder, these are those projects that either are partially complete, that we are looking at completing here in the upcoming year, or those projects that were planned for a previous year that are not yet complete. So starting things off here with the 2020 Asphalt Resurfacing Project, this is one. We completed a number of overlay locations this previous year. There's one main section that remains, that'd be Muscatine Avenue between Second Avenue and Court Street. So we anticipate that work beginning in the spring and complete in 2021. Just a reminder that will also include the pedestrian refuge island there for the Corrill Trail on kind of the south end of that section. Next, we have the Idyllwild Stormwater Drainage Diversion. So you guys have seen this recently. This is actually in the bidding process. So we anticipate taking bids for this project early this year. Again, this will be construction of a bypass along the kind of the west side of the Idyllwild area to help alleviate or deal with some of the localized flooding that has occurred historically in this area. Just a reminder, this also, this product will also include as a bid alternate, the pumping station that would be for the area as well. The Riverside Drive Pedestrian Tunnel, this is one that's been in the works for a while. We actually have nearly finalized design plans for this project. Late in that design process, we received word from the railroad that they were no longer supportive of the project. And so with that, we've kinda gone back to with back to work with our consultant to try and figure out ways to to respond to some of the concerns that were raised by the railroad and and find a way to move this project forward. So the plan is still to install a pedestrian tunnel. Again, this is along the west side of Riverside Drive between Murrell Avenue and Benton Street and would essentially include not only the tunnel through the the embankment there, but also sidewalk connections to the the north and south. Next is the Melrose Court Sanitary Sewer Replacement. This is a sanitary sewer line that was badly in need of repair. We were having maintenance issues out there repeatedly and quite frequently. So looking at replacing that line, essentially replacement of a an existing line. With that, we also are looking at making some improvements to the the sanitary sewer and storm sewer alignment. There's actually a sanitary main that runs underneath one of the buildings there. So we're looking at realigning that to take care of that issue as well as some storm sewer alignment improvements as well. Looking at that construction, the plan would be in 2021. American Legion Road Reconstruction. This will be a complete reconstruction of American Legion Road from Scott Boulevard out to Taft Avenue. It includes going from a rural section with ditches and turning that into an urban section. So we'll have curb and gutter and storm sewer. Also will include wide sidewalk on one side of the street, include bike lanes, on-street bike lanes, as well as utility improvements. This project will also include the roundabout at the Scott Boulevard and American Legion Road intersection as well as the pedestrian underpass near the New Hoover School. This is a will be bid through the DOT and we anticipate that happening in March. So this will also be likely a two-year construction window. First Avenue and Scott Boulevard Intersection Improvements will include a new roundabout at the First Avenue and Scott Boulevard intersection. There'll be some utility improvements as well, but the the majority of the project will be the installation of a new roundabout there. That one is currently under design and looking at 2021 construction as well. Second Avenue Bridge Replacement, this is one that's currently under design, looking at construction, hopefully in 2021. Essentially, it will be replacement of the existing bridge, which has reached the end of its useful life. There'll be some slope protection or bank stabilization work as well. Also, water main connection likely incorporated into the bridge design. With this, it'll also include sidewalk infill. So it'll not only have a sidewalk crossing on the bridge, but also connect to existing sidewalk to the north and south of this location. Continuing on the sidewalk infill, Gilbert Court Sidewalk Infill, this is a location where we've received complaints from time to time in the past. There's a section actually on both sides of the street that lacks sidewalk on the the Gilbert Court area just north of Highland. So this will look at basically extending sidewalk on both sides of the street from Highland up to where the sidewalk currently ends along Gilbert Court. Again, this will be one that we're looking at construction early in 2021. Scott Boulevard Trunk Sewer, this one is actually on the agenda tonight to hold a public hearing. This will be extending the sanitary sewer, trunk sewer, basically from where it currently ends just north of the railroad tracks, extending that up to American Legion Road, kind of the alignment there shown in yellow. As part of this project, we'll also be able to remove the existing pump station that is located just north of American Legion Road, kind of at the north end of that project. Down at the wastewater plant, we have a de-watering roll-off pavement project. Essentially, what this will do is install a pad where they can then utilize that for the use of de-watering roll-offs and what these are typically used for, those loads from such as sand and car wash and septic haulers. Basically, it's a way for them to de-water those loads before they they deal with them down at the plant. And so this would just give them a more solid working surface and make it much more efficient. Rehabilitation of Collector Wells 3 and 4. So this is on the water side of things. Basically, what they'll look at doing is clean out the existing laterals for Wells 3 and 4 as well as repairs and rehabilitation of the pumps and and the wet wells for those facilities. That is the ongoing projects. So we will next move to the annual project section. So these will be the products that have money every year within the program. And it looks like we're gonna kick things off with the park side of things. So I'll turn it over to Julie.
Okay, so the first project we have up is City Hall Annual Improvement Ones. Sorry. This is ongoing project. So in year three, it is this year, it is carpeting and painting on the third floor of City Hall. Future years include roof replacement and a few other things. So it's ongoing maintenance and repair items in City Hall. Next, we have the Park Annual Improvement Project. Is it, Kelly, are you moving the screen?
It's moved, Julie. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, it's frozen on mine. Okay, so Park, the Park Annual Improvement is park signs. This past year, we did basketball court replacements. We are adding benches, bicycle racks, bike fix-it stations and grills throughout the parks. So these are smaller projects throughout the parks and then also gives us the opportunities when partner or grant opportunities come up. Number three is the Park ADA Improvements. These are access improvements to different parks. It can be curb ramps or additional paving of paths to get to the playgrounds or other park amenities. Interest City Bike Trails is smaller trail projects that are generally connection projects or finishing out small sections of trails. A recent one would be a small section right in front of the Parks Maintenance Shop on Gilbert Street. The fifth one is Annual Rec Center Improvements, access improvements, entrance repairs. One of the next ones coming up will be redoing the entrance paving at Mercer Scanlon. Right now at the rec center, which is the reason I'm doing this from home, is that we have demolition happening in the rec center for the on-deck restrooms. One other small project there and building sites, some other things like that. And then number six is tree planting, one of our newer ongoing capital projects. We are right now in the process of preparing the bid documents and letting the neighbors know in the Mackinac Neighborhood and then also along Scott Boulevard for tree planting projects that will happen next season, next planting season. Think that's it for Parks and Rec.
All right, back to me for annual stormwater improvements. So this is an account that we use for improvement or issues that come up on the stormwater side of things. So every year, we kinda deal with repairs to stormwater infrastructure such as intakes or storm sewer pipe, dealing with issues of damaged pipe, collapsed pipe, open joints, that kind of thing. A lot of times we'll see similar to what's here in the picture is sinkholes. A lot of times are an indication of that. So just replacing or repairing those facilities and in those areas as they come up around town. Next one, I think, is the traffic signal projects. So this is something that we use every year. Helps to fund either new traffic signal locations or a lot of times it's to help repair or upgrade traffic signal locations that are existing. This one, this product will also include the installation of pan tilt zoom cameras at a number of locations that don't currently have those. And I think those were scheduled for 2022. Will be the next time we look at installing a group of those. Next one is the traffic calming account. And this again is kind of based on need or request. So this is for construction of traffic calming measures that make it all the way through the neighborhood process. So once they're selected and approved and the neighborhood has voted to approve those, then the actual construction dollars come out of this account. Next one is the curb ramp ADA. And this funds an annual project where we go and and look for locations that need either new ramps or upgraded ramps. Typically, our priority is those locations that have sidewalk facilities, but do not have any curb ramps. So those areas with full curb would be our top priority. And then we also then work our way down the list of those sites that may have ramps that are not compliant, either they're too steep or don't have truncated domes. But those locations are are throughout the city and will vary from year to year. Next one is our annual payment rehabilitation. So again, this is the asphalt overlay is obviously a big portion of that. This account also pays for PCC patching, crack sealing, chip sealing, other pavement maintenance projects that we have throughout the city. And those again will vary as far as locations throughout the city. That's also comes from recommendations from our recently completed pavement management study. Underground electrical facilities. So this is an account that will help pay for those times when we look to help relocate electrical facilities from overhead to underground. A lot of times those are situations where we have other projects in the area and the Mid-American will need to relocate their facilities depending on the corridors and and costs. We'll sometimes have conversations with them to look at ways to relocate underground. Helps from obviously an aesthetic standpoint, also from a safety standpoint from an American side. A lot of times what that'll be is if they already need to relocate, we'll pay essentially the upcharge that is necessary to go underground versus just relocating in another aerial position. Next is the annual bridge maintenance and repair project. So this is one that we use for our biannual inspections. So every other year, we go through and inspect all of the bridges in Iowa City. From that, we also get repair and and maintenance recommendations from our consultant. So this account would help to fund those. Typically, those are the again kind of repair and rehab projects. Anything that would be a full replacement or or anything like that would actually cut typically be its own CIP account. So this would be more of the on the repair and rehabilitation side of things. Next, the annual sewer main replacement. So this is a an annual fund that typically will fund a couple of different projects, one being the sewer lining project. So that is going in and looking at lining existing sanitary sewer or sanitary manholes. And what that typically does is for those those sections that are in decent shape, but maybe starting to show some signs of needs of repair, we can go ahead and line those and get a lot of life out of them for a relatively economical standpoint. And then as well as the lining projects, we also typically have a sewer repair project every year. And what that'll do is go in and and complete spot repairs. So maybe the most of the lines in good shape, but we have a section that may have some deficient joints or pipe issues. And so we'll go through and and make those spot repairs out of this account. With that, I will turn it over to Kent to talk about the the Bicycle Master Plan.
Yeah, greetings. Good afternoon, Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. Most of you will remember that back in 2017, the city adopted a very ambitious Bike Master Plan. And with your continued support, I'm happy to report that we've really made some tremendous progress. I just wanted to take a minute just to give you a quick update on a few of the projects that we completed back in 2020. Jason had already mentioned one, which was the American Legion or excuse me, the McColster Boulevard Project where we have bike lanes now between Gilbert and Sycamore. In 2020, we also finished bike lanes on Dodge Street, south of Burlington, and also completed the four-to-three-way conversion, four-to-three-lane conversion of Dodge Street between Bowery and Kirkwood. So we've got that continuous bike lane now essentially from north Iowa City on Dodge Street all the way to Bowery. We also completed a implementation of bike lanes on Burlington Street across the Iowa River. You may have noticed that was a major barrier that was identified in the Bike Master Plan, and it's nice to get that completed. As far as upcoming projects in 21, Jason did mention the American Legion Road Project where we'll have bike lanes as well as a 10-foot-wide side path. That'll be a nice project to link up to Hoover School and one that's been needed for some time. We also have the Highway 6 side path, Fair Meadows to Heinz, which you may hear about later today. And then we've also introduced a 2025 project in the CIP to continue that side path from Fair Meadows to Sycamore. And that really completes the entire, once those two projects are complete, continues the entire Highway 16 trail corridor, which is something really special. Continues the entire Highway 16 trail corridor, which is something really special. As part of our planning efforts to become a gold bike friendly community, I also wanted to just mention a few things that aren't capital. Investment related and staff has been working on a host of other educational and promotional work. We've created a series of 14 episodes of bike shorts videos, we call them. Which really educate the community on everything from how to maintain your bike to how to ride at night, to how to ride safely on bike lanes. And so on and so forth. We created a rules of the road brochure and translated that into six different languages. To try and reach as many of our residents here in Iowa City as we can. And then in addition to a host of other things, we also have been creating. Some weekly maps highlighting popular routes and encouraging folks to use our trail system. Here during the pandemic, we know that's good for both health. Both physically and mental health. And I think you'll hear about most of the capital projects here in your, in the rest of the presentation today, but I'll be here for questions if necessary.
Good afternoon. We have quite a bit of facility updates that we need. This is our 40th year. The senior center being here since 1981. As you see, this is a picture of some of the water damage issues that we have going on. We have been working with a consulting consultant firm here for majority of this year to get a master plan. We're about 95% complete with that master plan and we'll be coming back to you all later to kind of go into detail of some of the updated and needs. There's some tuck pointing, some, some wood floors that need to be. Changed as well as we need furniture replacement for multiple reasons. Lots of remodeling. We have some ADA, significant ADA needs. We have some immediate needs. For ADA to make sure that the facility works for the population we serve as well as the public. So we'll be working on those things as soon as we're able. But so far the plan is to work on some of those immediate needs and go on down the line. It'll be quite a bit of work. It'll be a couple of years. Before we're actually completed as well as we'll have some long-term items that we'll need to restore. We'll restore a lot of the historic portions of the outside of the building as well as. Really having in more focused on our west side of our building. Or a new entryway. We always have had the Washington Street entryway, but we really want to bring some focus there as well as create an exterior. For folks to be able to really know which door to come in to help away finding in the building, which will help with folks. Over time with diminished capacity as well as new folks coming into the area to know where to come into the senior center. And having our receptionist desk move down to that door. So that it's a little bit more centralized for folks. As well as carpeting that needs to be changed, walls, as well as moving some offices around, creating new fitness spaces. As well as looking at some of our new classroom spaces. So we're really excited about. Those options for us. We, we really appreciate the, the public input that has been provided to us. And we've been able to accommodate and move things around to make our plan work. And so. The plan is still up and going and we'll definitely keep you all up to date.
There we go. Good afternoon. This is Darian Nagel-Gan with Transportation Services. Happy New Year, everyone. We have the last project of the annual projects list. It is simply parking operations and maintenance of our parking facilities. Our annual project includes concrete restoration, application of sealants, repair of control joints and just generally all of the things that we need to do. To help maintain our facilities, which are of course, open, open air exposed to the weather, get lots of wear and tear and whatnot. Also part of this project too is I think our last remaining lights maybe that the city manages. Are the lights on top of our ramps that are not yet switched over to LED lights. We're hoping to fold that into the project and get those on a more energy efficient. More energy efficient system very soon.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Mike Tharp. I'm the airport manager for the Iowa City Airport. Walking you through the, the airport CIP. We are one of those departments that does depend on funding from other agencies in order for our CIP. Plans to go forward. The FAA funds, when they fund a project with us, they fund 90% of that project. The state has a similar program to the. The federal side. They supply 70 to 85% of the funding depending on. Their, their, their project. And through the budget process, the city gives us $100,000 that we use as matching for those grant opportunities. With that, one of the things that they. We encountered with the CARES Act last year, the CARES Act did turn our fiscal year 20 grants into 100% federal shares. So we were able to, and we're planning on using some of those grant matching funds that we didn't have to allocate to. The federal grants to do some projects at the airport that don't typically meet the, the scoring criteria to get awarded funding. Starting off our project list is the 1230 obstruction mitigation and Part 77 airspace mitigation. This is actually phase two. Because of the timing and some issues with the. Environmental, with the Protected Species Act. Brain's going blank. Sorry. We are actually out to bid for that and that will happen this winter. But last year we went through a major mitigation project with the, the neighborhoods. Around the airport and during that time there are about a dozen or so. Other trees that were tagged as, as being too tall and encroaching into the approach pass of the airport. So we are working with neighbors to mitigate those. The next project is the airport parking lot expansion. This is actually one of those projects that typically doesn't score very well with the, the state scoring system. So we are hoping to use those grant funds that we didn't have to expend on, on the federal projects to. Do this. As you can see from the picture, the last couple of years, the airport has been at capacity for parking on many occasions. It does make it a little bit harder for folks that are using the airport to get in, get out and. You know, just make it a little bit more convenient with some more parking. 3465, the runway environmental assessment, runway seven. This is a project that may or may not come to pass based on FAA criteria, but the initial plan. For the runway seven end is we can stretch a couple hundred more feet of runway in that, on that end. To increase our landing distance. This is a project that comes from our airport master plan. That master plan is a roughly 20-year. Plan on how to develop the airport and the airside needs of the airport. It is blessed by the FAA. And FAA uses that kind of as their planning mechanism. Again, this one would be the start process. Make sure there's no environmental issues or, or anything else to adding that a couple hundred feet to the end of, of seven. So keeps everything within the square footprint of, of the airport. Runway 25 threshold relocation. This is something we're working on next spring. It is kind of the, the end result of our. Master plan update and the goal of that was to take the airport, take the. The, the infrastructure that we have and without really dramatically, without expanding the footprint of the airport, maximizing the. Efficiency and the use of the airport facility. So with that, we're able to bring that threshold back about 800 feet. That'll get us not quite to our 5,000 foot landing distance on runway 25. And that 5,000 foot landing distance is a pretty big number because a lot of our charter, charter operators. Use that number for being able to land at the airport and also for taking fuel for aircraft that, that does land at the airport. The runway 1230 displaced threshold and relocation. This is one of those projects is tied, is tied in with the mitigation work. Making the airport just a little bit more efficient. We can slide the landing distance on the northwest side of the airport down a little bit and we do add a little bit of. Concrete to maintain our existing distances on the southeast side, but it does shift the. Protection zones, the approach zones that are over the northwest neighborhoods, a little bit closer into the airport. And allows, allows the, the protection airspace over the neighborhoods to be higher than the sky. Airport apron expansion. This is a more or less an airplane parking project. We do get fairly busy, especially during football season with airplanes. The FAA has a formula for based on operational activity and how big of a parking apron you can have. And we are looking to expand our parking apron based on that formula. And then the next one is runway 725 pavement repairs. This is a crack ceiling pavement maintenance project. The runway 725 was a project that was started in 2008, 2009 in terms of the rehab. So we are. At a point now where some basic maintenance, crack ceiling. You know, crack ceiling, stuff like that will extend the life of the pavement. So we don't have a major reconstruction project on our hands in the near future. Runway 1230, the next project is the same thing. Again, just slotted for the end of fiscal, the end of 2024. So the end of this. Plan to do the same crack ceiling pavement maintenance. And that is the airport's plan.
Good afternoon, everybody. John Greer, Fire Chief. Have a couple of projects to talk with you about today. As Dennis indicated in his opening remarks, we have a. Over the next five years, we have a few apparatus that are due for replacement. That's the bulk of our capital improvement program. Just for your refresher, we base our replacement on a fleet management score, working with the equipment division. And number of years in service. And then if we happen to have an apparatus that develops a, a problem that's not fixable, we ask to have it replaced a little sooner. But. Coming up in this year, we have for the next big purchases, the, our big ladder truck, which works out of downtown. And then we take a couple of years off and we replace our smaller ladder truck, which is stationed on the west side of town, Station 2. And then the Scotty House is that fire safety house that we take around to the schools. And then we have some pumper coming up due for replacement. In 25. And then in a couple of future years after that. The second project is we developed a crack at Fire Station 1 floor. And it has slowly been expanding. So we had some design professionals come in and look at it. And their assessment was is that it needs to be removed and replaced. So that's the $95,000 for this year. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Ellsworth Carver, the director of the library. We've got three projects to speak about today. And feel free to jump in with questions if, if you've got any. We are in a great building that's really heavily used. And it was finished in 2004, so we're about 17 years into the building life. Which I think is you're starting to hit that, that sweet spot of things starting to need to be replaced and refinished. So we're looking at a multi-year project here to replace some of the carpeting and furnishing in the big parts of the library. The, the cost of this project includes both the replacing of the flooring and, and some of the furnishings. But also all that demo and prep and moving the materials to facilitate these. These replacements. This is. Simply. Maintenance that needs to be done in a building as it ages. And I look forward to. Hopefully making choices that will last as long as this first round did and continue to very carefully steward those resources. That's it for the first one. And our second project here is looking at an automatic material handler. This library and many, many other libraries use RFID tags on our materials. So when they're checked in and checked out. Our computers communicate with those chips to keep track of the items. And that's kind of how our catalog operates. An AMH. Takes part of the human input out of those systems. And this building was designed to. Facilitate, hold an AMH machine downstairs in our first floor returns area. There are basically a system of conveyor belts and bins that does some of the initial sorting of materials for you. Libraries that have these machines get benefits like increased return time from when an item is returned to back on the shelf. More accurate circulation statistics. Fewer hands on the materials before they're back and ready for reuse. The reason that, that I'm bringing this up right now. Is there's a, the, our library uses volunteers to do a lot of our check-in work. So. We're, we're feeling pretty concerned about will those volunteers come back after this COVID experience? The trend that we're seeing nationally is libraries that are ready to bring their volunteers back, aren't seeing that. So this piece of machinery would help us bridge that gap. Between a task that was done very heavily with volunteer work. To allowing us to, to keep doing what we're doing, have staff doing other, other dynamic work. I want to be clear with this one, that there is no intention of reducing staff if we did introduce this machine. That it doesn't supersede the work of human beings. Here it would replace some of the work done by volunteers in anticipation of maybe need to do different work to get those folks in. We are one of the few, if not the only sized eight library in Iowa. That doesn't use an AMH. They're, they're a very common piece of library machinery. And I think that we'd be coming at a great time when the technology is pretty advanced and ready to do the work that we need. That's it for that one. And the last project sheet that I put in was to look at doing. A facility study, looking at space needs and environmental impact, kind of like with that flooring project. You know, we're, we're getting, our, our building is aging and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to set ourselves and future generations up for success. So we want to make sure that our spaces are being used well, that we're, we're doing the, the best. Work with our large and small systems to. Contribute to, you know, a greener future and make sure that we're, we're incorporating those into the plans. So this is a multi-year. Project that would first start with having experts come in to do those evaluations of how we're using the space. How we're impacting the environment and then going on to implement some of the changes that may be suggested. Thank you.
Yes, hi, Kent Ralston again. Neighborhood and Development Services has just one project in the plan this year. This is for remaining funds for implementation of our new software package. Although the package is largely up and running, the software handles everything from tracking of residents' requests. To tracking and processing subdivision applications and is also used to process building, construction plans and housing inspections.
Okay, moving on to Parks and Recreation. This is Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Recreation Director. It's fun for me to look through this list because in the five years I've been here, we've accomplished just about this number of projects. So it's fun to keep moving forward and we appreciate. Support on a number of things. The first project we're going to talk about is, is simply replacing the roads or resurfacing the roads at the cemetery. They haven't been done in a number of years. So this replaces. Some of the asphalt within the cemetery. The second project Kent Ralston actually already talked about. This is one of the trail segments on Highway 6. This is the Broadway to Fair Meadows section. Later on in the project list, you'll see the Heinz Road to. Fair Meadows Trails, both important trails along the Highway 6, Highway 1 corridor. Item number three is City Park Pool Replacement. We know and love City Park Pool. It's a nice historic pool, 72 years old. This summer, one of the oldest pools in the state of Iowa that is still operating. We will be embarking on a recreation and aquatic facilities master plan this spring and summer. With one of the questions being, what should be the future of City Park Pool? Do we renovate it as it is? Do we replace it? Do we renovate it as it is? Do we replace it? What are the needs of the community that can be best met with this? And so this gives us a placeholder for that project in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The next one is three very popular splash pads, one at Fair Meadows, one at Weatherby and one at Tower Court. And specifically the ones at Fair Meadows and Weatherby are beginning to show their age. The equipment is becoming more difficult to maintain. The it's fading, there's some equipment errors in it, so we will be looking at replacing the above-ground equipment. Not a wholesale redo of the splash pads, but simply refreshing of them with new play features on the top. And that is in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. The next one is behind the scenes, but very important, and this is upgrading building automation controls. This is what runs our heating, cooling, humidification systems throughout the city, through our government building staff. This will replace the systems in a number of facilities, including fire stations, the Animal Care Center. Senior Center, and I believe there's one more, but this is it's all behind the scenes. What it will allow is for all of the systems to be on the same platform so that staff can monitor them and do an amount of adjustment remotely as as needed. Gives us a better record of what's going on and will help increase the energy efficiency of all of these facilities. Item number six is two new parks eventually, one in the Palisades area and the northeast area. And the one in Stone Bridge, just kind of north and east of where Front Hills Miller Park or the St. Pat's Catholic Church is. We have land in both of these areas and this would just develop smaller public use parks on those lands. Item number seven is Chatting Green Restroom and Shelter. This is our largest or second largest community garden site, but that is all it is right now, is community garden site and open space. Gardeners would really like to have a gathering place, the shelter along with the restroom and probably some kind of counter space for washing vegetables or doing potlucks or something like that within the shelter. That's scheduled for twenty twenty-two. Item number eight is Rec Center Improvements, both to Robert A. Lee and Mercer Scanlon. We have been ongoing doing smaller projects and doing projects tonight on the agenda. You have a dehumidification project and tuck pointing project at Mercer Scanlon. This project in the future years will look at both locker rooms for ADA accessibility and just making them more inviting to the public in general, along with some renovations that Robert A. Lee to change some of the classrooms and use spaces to match public need. Once again, one of the questions we'll be asking is we do the master planning next spring and summer. Item nine, Whispering Meadows, this has been in the plan for a while as an upgrade by adding a shelter and small playground and some access paths. But we recently received a state resource enhancement and protection re grants. So that moves part of the project up to twenty-one, as we have ninety thousand dollars from the state to do ecological improvements. So we'll be working on the wetlands, plantings, removing some of the invasive species and replanting the area and getting it one of the new park sites. Item ten is shelters and restroom replacement in Lower City Park. Later on, we'll have one in Upper City Park. We've been looking closely at the use of these facilities and the number of facilities in this park. Following along somewhat with the City Park, Lower City Park Master Plan, moving things eventually away from the river and up towards the hillside. As with the new playground that just recently opened. What this will do is consolidate the shelters, so there'll be fewer shelters and restrooms, but they will be higher quality. And we think that really matches the amount of use that the park is receiving and has for a number of years. Number eleven is Kiwanis Park. This is a twenty twenty-three replacement, most likely of the playground area primarily. It did include a shelter at one time. It's in really good shape, so I don't know that the shelter will be be replaced. The playground is a favorite because it's built into the hill and it's got naturally some natural areas into it. It's also very hard to maintain and is very much showing its age. So leading up to this, we will definitely have a neighborhood process to look at what type of playground people would like to see as a replacement. It might be a nature playground again, or it could be something completely different. I think that the slate's wide open for that large of an area. Number twelve is renovating softball fields at Napoleon Softball Complex, Fields five through eight. This includes regrading, getting the drainage repaired and fixed up. So just makes them more easier to maintain and safer for players as well as mean and staff. Number thirteen is the Upper City Park Shelter and Restroom, twenty twenty-four, similar to Lower City Park. Looking at consolidating the number of restrooms and shelters that we have in Upper City Park. And replacing them with with better quality facilities there. Number fourteen is Hickory Hill Park, the North, the Conklin Shelter, replacing that in the restroom. I believe this is the last one we have of this style that's out there, and this would be twenty twenty-five. And it would simply be a replacement of the restroom and shelter with the similar design that we've used at Creekside, Willow Creek, Weatherby and a number of other parks at this point, following the park master plan. Glendale Park and Shelter will be next summer. This is a smaller park where we'll be looking at replacing the playground equipment and then adding a small picnic shelter for that. So we'll be doing the public input process on this in the in the coming months and have the work done on this next summer. Number sixteen is the Cork Hill Park Shelter and Playground. In this particular park, the restroom is fairly new, so we won't be replacing that. But we will be probably once again replacing just one, and there's currently two shelters. Probably replace one, remove one, and then replace the playground that's there. It's one of the older playgrounds we have still in our park system. Item number seventeen is Robert A. Lee Pool Filter and Dehumidification Process. The project, this is all the behind-the-scenes equipment that makes the Robert A. Lee Pool run and function. This will also kind of, this will be one of the questions asked on the recreation and facilities master planning process. Of what should the future Robert A. Lee Pool be as well? So that would there be changes? Or should it continue as it is? But this is all the behind-the-scenes filters, pumps. And it would add dehumidification for more efficient operations. Number eighteen is the Happy Hollow Playground Replacement. As you remember, just a few years ago, we did replace the restroom and shelter. We did some court refurbishment, some the field refurbishment this summer. But one thing left to do there is the playground, and that will happen in twenty twenty-three. Terramal Skate Park has is reaching the end of its useful or salvageable life. It's well-used every day, I believe, with the number of skaters out there. So in twenty twenty-five, we're looking, or twenty twenty-four, looking at renovating the skate park. We've had requests recently for for lighting and some other renovations to bring it up to more current standards for skate parks. So we'll be looking at that and doing the renovations there. City Park Ball Field Improvements are happening. Now it's a twenty twenty-one project. This includes fence and dugout repairs, grading of the fields, which has already happened, and some lighting improvements, some of which have happened and some will still happen before next spring. Twenty-one is Mercer Ballpark Diamond Improvements, and this is twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. This is where currently City High Plays, holding this off till twenty-three or twenty-four will give us time to work with the school district to determine if indeed they will continue to play their varsity baseball at this site, or they will be moving to a new field closer to to the high school. This particular budget includes artificial turf, which would need to be a partnership with the school district if we went forward with that. And then a number of other improvements to all of the other fields at that facility. Item twenty-two is Hunter's Run Park, and this would be a new shelter and playground in the park. Once again, also one of our older areas of park equipment. And this would replace that with, we would have a public input process to determine what type of playground and then a small shelter similar to our other shelters. Item twenty-three is the Fair Meadows to Heinz Trail along Highway Six, which Kent already mentioned that I've already talked about a little bit. Twenty-four is Events Facility Improvement, so this is for our Terry True Blood Event Center and the Ned Ashton House. Things like staining the outside of the building, which is just a regular maintenance, ongoing maintenance task. And then at both facilities, also upgrading the the BAS system so that HVAC can be monitored along with all of the other systems within the city. And some audio visual equipment and upgrades at the TTRA Lodge. Number twenty-five is Off-Road Bicycle Trail Development. We are looking at a new site that we just acquired through Public Works along the Elks Golf Course. And developed this along with some other property that we have down in the river bottoms there into an off-road bicycle track, single-track bicycle course. Number twenty-six is Ped Mall Playground. This one has been moved forward to this year. In fact, we have the kickoff meeting hopefully for it later this week. The Ped Mall Playground is become very difficult to maintain. We are no longer able to get replacement parts for a number of the slides and different pieces of equipment. In fact, it's it's short at least one slide, if not two right now, just because we haven't been able to find replacements for them. So this will look at replacing it with something new and we'll be doing a process with the library staff, the Downtown Association and other stakeholders in that downtown area to come up with something really, really unique and attractive for the Ped Mall. Number twenty-seven and twenty-eight, look to two thousand and twenty-five projects. The first one is Benton Hill. This replaces the playground. It's rather a small playground, but replaces it in twenty twenty-five. And then College Green Playground is a larger playground, which will get also replaced in twenty twenty-five. In both cases, probably not the shelters at those parks, as they have various structures, different structures that are important to the sense of place in those parks, but the playgrounds are reaching an age where they definitely will need to be replaced. Number twenty-nine is asphalt resurfacing at the park maintenance facility. The number one thing probably asked for by staff right now, the driveway is literally falling apart. So we look forward to getting that repaired and and having safe access in and out of the park maintenance facility. Same thing with number thirty, the Willow Tree Creek Trail Replacement. This is a well-used trail. We're finding even more now this winter as we've been clearing snow and ice for more of this park. But as you can see from the photo, we've got roots that have come up through the asphalt. We'll be doing some remedial work in the spring to make it safe for use in the meantime, but then looking at a replacement for it in twenty twenty-three. And the final project on our Parks and Rec list is ADA Elevator Improvement. So City Hall, Senior Center, Rec Center elevators all need to have some changes made to make them ADA compliant. Things like voice active or voice audible systems and some other things that make them more accessible to more people. That's all for Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Okay, Denise Bretherton with the Police Department, interim chief for another week. We just have two projects up here. The first one is our digital photo management. And what this would do would give us the ability to house digital evidence from any source and maintain security and efficiency in our evidence room. The way that evidence comes into us is changed and evolved, and we need to catch up with that. And as you can see, it's crowded in there, and this will give us the ability to clean that up and have a more secure way to store photos, recordings, downloads and and other type of digital evidence that come to us. And the next one.
Denise, you were, you 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 got muted accidentally there.
Am I back on? Yes. Okay, so again, at the shelter, there's no backup power when we lose electricity. And with things like a duration and other natural events we've had happen in the last couple of years, we find it can get very hot, very cold in there. There's not a whole lot of ventilation for the animals, so especially in that summertime. It it was always a future plan to have this when they first built the facility. It was too expensive to do then. But we've we've wanted to do this, and as we have more incidents now and we lose that electricity, you would see it's imperative that we get that in there for those animals. And I am available for any questions.
All right, moving on to Public Works, starting things off out at the landfill, a group of projects here. First one being the replacement of the equipment building. So this will be a new building that would actually allow for storage of all the equipment or the availability for storage for equipment out there. Currently, some of the equipment actually doesn't fit into the existing building, so this will help to alleviate that. The compost pad improvements.
Well, you say you don't.
Area out there.
Better I notice when I'm on.
So L thirty-three, thirty-three, this will be basically improvements to the compost pad area, helping to make that area more usable and more efficient for the the composting operations. The landfill dual extraction system, so that'll be an expansion of the existing system that is out at the landfill for leachate and and gas. There's also a project for a future landfill cell design, so this will be kind of the design phase of that and then construction in a currently an unfunded year, but a future year. The bulk water fill station, so we have these at a couple of locations throughout the city. But basically what this does is it's a way to fill large tanks. It would be usable for staff or contractors as needed, also could be used for for firefighting operations as needed. And typically what this would do is to fill tanker trucks and and that kind of stuff. There's a project for the Leachate Lagoons. There's currently two lagoons out at the landfill. This would look to essentially fill in one of the lagoons that's no longer being used. And then making repairs or renovations to the the other lagoon out at the landfill. Then finally, expansion of the landfill gas infrastructure, so the gas collection system out there at the landfill. So that group out at the landfill. Next one is the South Side Recycling Site. This is down off of Riverside Drive near Sturgis Ferry Park. This would install pavements and other infrastructure to allow for a recycling site here. Also would include lighting signage, that kind of stuff, would also hopefully make it available for providing compost and wood chips to users as well. Next one is a couple of pieces of equipment for resource management, first being a couple of automated curbside collection trucks. Again, replacement vehicles there and then replacement of a bulldozer for use out of the landfill as well. Number four is out off of Westminster Drive. This is an area where in the past we've received complaints of localized flooding during heavy rain events. So this project will look to address the those issues, look at upsizing storm sewer out there as well as some intake improvements and other stormwater improvements along that section. Rundell Street, the the pump station vault out there, this will do a couple of different things. First, it'll make some modifications to the the hatches and and the top of the vault there to allow for ADA improvements. So it'd be compliant sidewalk and curb ramps in this location. It'll also make improvements to some of the equipment actually included within the pump station that is reaching the end of its useful life. Number six is River Street, so this will make improvements to the storm sewer out there right now. It's an existing ditch along River Street. This is an area where we have issues from time to time regarding debris and other stuff that causing blockages. So this will look at installing storm sewer and making related improvements to that area. Number seven, Petzel Place Storm Sewer, so this will look to again upsize existing storm sewer infrastructure. This is an area where we've again received complaints of localized flooding. It's, we have some infrastructure that's in need of repair. It's, we have some infrastructure that's in need of repair. So this project will repair that and again, upside some of those facilities. Number eight, out at the public works site, sand and salt storage bunkers. These are were originally included in the public works site project. And due to budget constraints were removed. Basically, this will install covered storage out at the public works site. Can be used for obviously sand and salt, could also be used for topsoil or rock or other materials as needed for for city operations. Number nine will address the non-public safety radio system, making upgrades to that system. Essentially, again, equipment that's reaching in its useful life and is need a repair for for moving forward. There's some pieces of equipment that will no longer be supported here in the near future. So again, just making those necessary upgrades. Number ten, the Melrose Avenue Improvements Project. So this is on the west side of town. Will reconstruct Melrose Avenue and IWV road out to the landfill. So basically be between the landfill and Highway two eighteen. Complete reconstruction. This will remain a rural section, so it'll be a roadway with ditches. Also includes water main extension out to the landfill as part of that project. Currently looking at bidding that through the DOT. Probably mid-year this year. And again, this is a joint project with the county. Number eleven, so reconstruction of Dubuque Street from Washington Street to Iowa Avenue. This is another project that stems from the downtown streetscape master plan. This project would be done similar to what was done along Washington Street a few years ago. So it addressed not only paving. Sidewalk area, utility improvements as well as lighting and some wayfinding as well. Kirkwood Avenue to Capitol Street Connection. So this is down in the Riverfront Crossings area, just north of Riverfront Crossings Park. This would look to extend Capitol or Kirkwood Avenue and Capitol Streets. This project will look at the functional design for that. So basically laying out the the project, the alignment, that kind of stuff for the preliminary design. For those extensions as well as utility improvements as well. Any funding for actual construction would happen in a future year. Court Street Reconstruction, this will, this project will look at a complete reconstruction of Court Street from Muscatine Avenue to First Avenue. Again, this will be all new pavement, sidewalk improvements, curb ramp improvements, as well as utility upgrades and repairs. So complete reconstruction of that corridor. Out on Benton Street, we'll be doing a rehabilitation project, which will be an overlay of Benton Street from Mormon Trek. To just west of Greenwood Drive, which is where we had done overlay a few years ago. So kind of. Continuing the next section here, it'll include not only an overlay as well as curb ramp improvements. We're also looking at some water main improvements and with this project will also install official bike lanes on Benton Street for this stretch. Reconstruction of Rochester Avenue. This will go from First Avenue essentially to Ralston Creek. Again, this will be another one that looks at a full reconstruction, so new pavement, new sidewalk. As well as utility improvements throughout the corridor. Next, we have a couple of roadway improvement studies. So the first one will be at Highway one, Highway six intersection. And this is, we'll look at basically with a future reconstruction of the. The intersection, what that might look like. So it'll be kind of laying out that alignment and looking what that future improvement might look like. A big piece of this will also be pedestrian facilities, connections to the nearby trails and sidewalk connections through that intersection. The second one listed is the Oakdale Boulevard Extension. So this will essentially be. An upgrade or an update to a study that was done a number of years ago. And we'll really focus on future extension of Oakdale Boulevard to the east of Highway one. With redevelopment proposed or expected to happen in the not too distant future in that area. It really helps to kind of lay out that preferred alignment so that as redevelopment occurs, we're able to to reserve that right away for for future use. This one's been mentioned previously. So Dodge Street Reconstruction, this will be a big one, a joint project with the DOT. Will reconstruct Dodge Street from Governor Street on the north to Burlington Street on the south. This one will include all new pavement, sidewalk and utility improvements as well. And like I mentioned, it'd be a joint project with the DOT. Orchard Street Reconstruction, this is one that we have under design right now. Be complete reconstruction of Orchard Street from Highway one to Benton Street. This is pavement that obviously is in need of replacement. And so it'll be all new pavement. It'll also include. Sidewalk infill along the east side of of Orchard Street. So there'll be continuous sidewalk. From Benton to Highway one on both sides of Orchard Street. Also will include a pedestrian crossing of Orchard Street on the south end at Highway one. This project also will include some sanitary sewer repairs or replacement as well as water main replacement. So. On to North Gilbert Street. This will be another reconstruction project. This will be again, new pavement. Will also look at adding sidewalk along both sides of North Gilbert Street from Brown Street to Kimball Road. So it'll tie into the improvements along Kimball Road that were done with the Gateway Project. As well as pavement and sidewalk, it'll also include new water main sanitary and storm sewer improvements as well. Gilbert Street Bridge. So this will be a replacement of the existing bridge with a similar structure. In addition to the bridge, it'll also include some slope protection along the creek as well as sidewalk improvements. Some storm sewer replacement as well along Gilbert Street and other associated work. Park Road Reconstruction. So this will look to reconstruct Park Road from Rocky Shore Drive to. Riverside Drive, again tying into improvements that were recently completed with the Gateway Project. Similar to the other products that include new pavement, sidewalk and utilities throughout the corridor. Taft Avenue out on the east side of town. So this will be another complete reconstruction. This one will probably be similar to what we're, we're going to be doing on American Legion Road. So this would be again, another rural section that we'd be looking. At upgrading to an urban section with new curb and gutter utility improvements throughout the corridor. And so this section will be. This section would be for from American Legion up to Lower West Branch. Foster Road Elevation. So this will be a functional design for looking at the elevation of Foster Road. Essentially from No Name to Dubuque Street in that area that flooded back in two thousand and eight. Obviously with the Peninsula Neighborhood located where it is, this is the the only access to that area currently. So this will look at what that, what the design would would include to elevate Foster Road to ensure that that. Access remains open during flood events. Next is a couple of sidewalk infill projects. The first one on Highland Court, there's a couple of properties there that currently do not have sidewalks. So this would install sidewalk along those two properties and tie on, tie into existing sidewalk on both ends. Similar along Scott Boulevard, there's a section of sidewalk along the dog park there. Or a missing section of sidewalk on the dog park there that would be completed as part of infill with this project. Burlington Street Bridge Replacement. This project will look at replacing the two existing bridges. And combining those into one bridge. So this will be a joint project with the DOT as well as the university. In addition to the the bridge component of the project, we also would look at the the corridor from Front Street. Essentially all the way from through Grand Avenue up to Melrose. Been some preliminary conversations with the university to look at how that might be done better. And so this product would look at not only kind of studying the area, but as well will include design of the project. I would note that construction will is actually outside of the current five-year plan right now scheduled for or planned for two thousand and twenty six. Reconstruction of Fairchild Streets. This will be a couple of blocks of Fairchild, similar to what we did on Davenport Street a couple of years ago. So this would go back as a brick street. Essentially what we would do is is construct a PCC street and then have a brick layer on top of that. Expected to definitely improve longevity of the street, likely will include some utility improvements as well. Next up is a couple of sanitary sewer improvement projects. So these are products that will be essentially replacing existing sanitary sewer. Just those areas that are in need of of replacement. First one is along Nevada Avenue. This is actually along the backyards of. Properties along Nevada Avenue. So again, replacement of existing sewer there. Rare South Sewer, this will be upsizing the sanitary sewer along Abbey Lane from the park. To the west to Highway two eighteen and then it would extend new sanitary sewer under Highway two eighteen to. For access to the west of Highway two eighteen. Then the Benton Street Trunk Sewer Project, this will look to upsize and relocate an existing line. Near Benton Street that will help with not only repairs to the sanitary sewer line, but also greatly help access to the line, which is currently. Difficult to do. Next one down at the wastewater treatment plant, the digester complex rehabilitation. This project will look at making a number of improvements, not only to equipment within the the complex. But also some operational changes in how phosphorus is removed from the stream. That will help us deal with the struvite issues that we're dealing with down at the wastewater plant. So kind of twofold improvements as part of that project. Next are a number of projects that would be looking at replacing existing equipment down at the wastewater plant. So again, these are. Pieces of equipment that are currently existing, reaching the end of their useful life. Many of these are operating nearly full time. So. It just gets to a point where they need to be replaced. It includes the influent rake and screen replacement, which is essentially the kind of the first step of the. The treatment process down at the plants. Then there's a number of pump replacements for the influent pumps, the activated sledge pumps. And the recirculation pumps. In addition, replacement of the grit classifiers and heat exchanger. And then finally, there's a number of of buildings down at the wastewater treatment plant that have roofs that are in need of repair. So this will be funding over a number of years to help kind of start the process of replacing those or repairing those as needed. A few improvements down at the wastewater treatment plant, first thing being some of the the mixer portion of the. The plant, looking at making some improvements there, mostly on the efficiency side and helping to reduce energy usage. Looking at making improvements to the bio solids conveyor, extending that and making it again, helping from. An operational efficiency standpoint. And then a couple of improvements to the aeration basins and equipment down at the the plant. Number thirty one is a number of lift station improvements, starting things off with the Hawkeye Lift Station. This project would actually would remove the existing building, make some revisions to the lift station there. And turn it into or convert it to a wet well, wet well setup. So would no longer have a building there. Making improvements to Napoleon Lift Station. Again, it's been in operation for a number of years and just have some. Equipment that's reaching into its useful life. So making some upgrades and repairs to that location. And then making repairs to the Highlander Lift Station that is located up off of Highway one. In the, to the the west there and looking at making some capacity and and just. Age improvements to that facility. Product number thirty two is the jet truck replacement. So this is a picture of the existing truck. This is something that has again, reaching the end of its useful life. So making a replacement of this vehicle. Just getting to the point where maintenance costs and downtime are starting to add up. And so looking at replacing it with a a new vehicle. Moving over to the water side of things, a few water main replacement projects. So again, these are products that will be replacing existing main and in. Existing locations. The first one Bradford Drive, that's down near Southeast Junior High. The second one being Highway one from Hawk Ridge over to Westport Plaza. And then off Highway six, Fair Meadows to Industrial Park Road, again, all pretty straightforward water main replacement projects. The fourth one there, again, replacing water main along Dill Streets. I would note with Dill Street Project, we also are looking at some sidewalk infill. Kind of from the Black Springs Circle to the east to Teeters Court. Product number thirty four, again, on the water side of things, making improvements to some of the well locations. First one would be the Jordan Well. Looking at replacing equipment that's reached the end of its useful life. So improvements there. Out at the Peninsula Well Field, looking at doing some electrical work to provide redundancy to the well field out there. And then finally, looking at Collector Well, number two, cleaning, upgrading there, again, cleaning laterals and making repairs and. Rehabbing the the actual well. Moving out to the water treatment plant, some improvements out there. First one being the high service pump, the variable frequency drives there. The, this is again, existing equipment that is in need of repair or replacement. Making upgrades to the chlorine feeder system, updates there as well as improving staff safety. With that system, making improvements to the the front meeting room out at the water plant. It's a large meeting room. Definitely used for training and other large gatherings, but the audio visual equipment there is certainly dated. Also, those improvements will help to improve the functionality of the space. And then the chemical room and outdoor lighting upgrades will be upgrades to LED equipment. And also help with just the usability of the spaces and improved lighting for for those areas. The GSR Ground Storage Reservoir Generator enclosure replacements. So there's three locations. The Rochester Avenue, Second More Street, Emerald Street, the ground storage reservoirs there have backup generators. Currently, the existing enclosures are getting to a point where they're no longer weatherproof. And so making replacements there to help extend the the life of that equipment. Out at the water plant or I guess part of the water system, looking at a treatment technology study. With nutrient removal becoming more and more important as we we move forward. This will be help fund a study to look at the nutrient removal process and and provide some guidance on how best to move forward. With the the system. And then finally, looking at asset inventory. So the city is currently in the process of. Implementing an asset management software and program. And so with this, this will allow for data collection to get essentially the the water and wastewater systems. Get data for the entire system and have that ready to populate within that software and and. Allow for that asset management system to really be beneficial and utilize that. system to really be beneficial and utilize that that existing data. With that, I think I will pass it off to Darian for transportation.
Thank you, Jason. We have nine projects to present to you this evening, the first of which is the replacement of our electronics in our smart parking meters. So this was a project about 10 years ago. It was quite a revolution, at least to me. I didn't have to carry change anymore, but now our parking meters allow us to to slide your credit card in and out without having to carry change around with you. Fortunately though, they're reaching the end of their useful life. So we're having more parking meters malfunction, but probably more importantly, the 3G technology that they're all based out of if you if you follow old technology at all, it's pretty old and outdated and it's going to be discontinued very soon. So we are in the process right now of updating the the internal computer components of our parking meter. The second project is video cameras for our parking facilities, and these are really security cameras and they're designed to help keep our our customers, their property, our property, safe and secure. The third project is parking enforcement vehicles, and this is really an expansion of a program that we already use today. So we have this vehicle before you, but it would be duplicating it to enhance our services with lightning, excuse me, license plate reader technology to really aid in enforcement. And it really helps to ensure we can get to the areas of town that we need to. And as you might imagine, it takes a long time for a person to walk through our ungated parking facilities, and this is designed to help to help improve enforcement of those areas. All right, our number four project is parking ramp automated parking equipment. And again, about 10 years ago, we we jumped into the automated parking equipment world. It's, you know, you get a ticket in, you feed a ticket out, you can use your credit card for payment. It's been really convenient for the public. It's been very popular. But again, it's reaching our equipment is reaching the end of its useful life and we are spending a lot of additional staff time for our maintenance crew to help customers when they do have equipment that malfunctions. So this project would be to help renew that automated parking equipment in all of our parking facilities. The fifth item is the replacement of our LED fixtures and parking facilities. And again, we were we were pretty early adopting with our LED fixtures. We we saw a dramatic decrease in electricity usage and the amount of funds that were required to keep the power going in our ramps because those lights are on 24/7. However, however much we love the electricity reduction, unfortunately, they don't last forever. So we're at the point now where we really need to invest in another round of LED fixtures for all of our parking facilities, except for the Harrison Street facility, which was built in 2017. But the remaining of facilities really do need to have their equipment upgraded. The sixth project is tower place drainage modifications, and this parking facility was built to turn stormwater inward to the center of the facility. And unfortunately, at the time this was designed, I don't know if they were quite assuming maybe some of the changes in climate that have been happening to us in recent years and during extreme rainfall events, we do have flooding in the very lower level of this facility. So this project is meant to help divert some of that stormwater from the center of the facility and help divert some of it around the outside of the facility to reduce some of that pressure on on the pipes, which can't handle some of those extreme, you know, 15 minute extreme weather events that seem to be increasing with frequency. The number seven project is, of course, our transit maintenance facility relocation project, and Dennis talked a little bit about this earlier. So this project would involve the construction of a new transit facility at the Public Works Site off of McCallister and Gilbert Street. Would be a new facility for maintenance operations. It would be a new facility for storage. Some reasons why this project is important is because we are currently hemmed in at our current facility. We cannot add another bus. In fact, we have a bus that sleeps in our bus wash every night, which might be the equivalent of sleeping in a bathtub because you don't have enough bedrooms sort of thing. So if we get into a position where we we want to expand our service, we're we're limited at this facility. Other other reasons why this facility is important is because we're really at a kind of a crossroad in transit and there's vastly and rapidly changing dry train technology. We're looking, we are foraying into electric technology. There's also hydrogen fuel cells. And building a new facility purpose built for alternate transit fueling will be really important. It'll be a really important aspect of this project. Another item is that we have some environmental issues onsite at this location that precludes us from expanding here. So being able to move to a facility, a different different location that does not have those environmental constraints will be will be really useful. And last but not least, in terms of funding, as Dennis mentioned earlier, and Mike Sarp also alluded to, you know, transit is also relies pretty heavily, especially especially for large scale projects like for just buses and for facilities on federal and state funding sources. We have been actively pursuing federal funding for this project specifically. We're hoping our luck is is better this year. We've been submitting multiple federal applications for the last several years and we will continue to do so. Those usually will net 75 to 80% of the project in terms of reimbursement. So we'll continue to go after funding sources for this project. The number eight project is our transit bus shelter replacement and expansion, and you may have seen a few of our new shelters around town. We're replacing shelters that are, you know, damaged beyond their useful life. Or we're adding shelters at locations that could really use them. We did press pause in this project during the last year because again, we are we're in the deep dive with all of our routes and stops and we didn't want to you know, invest in in a stop until we knew for sure that that it was it was part of the transit future. However, we are picking that back up again as that picture becomes more clear and can expect to see more transit amenities and facilities such as these transit shelters at stops in the future. Last but not least is transit interchange and bus stop improvements sort of piggybacks off the last project, but this is really to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow at the interchange and to improve amenities again at transit stops throughout the community, and that can be anything from our bus stop signage to seating shelters, you know, information boards. We received some really good recommendations from the consultant team that assisted us with the transit study. So these funds would be earmarked to help implement some of those recommendations. And with that, I believe I'm turning it back over to Jason.
All right, starting things off with the the fire station. John, were you gonna speak to these?
Sure. I can chat about them real quick. Fire Station Five property, I think we we just closed on that recently. And that's the one located down on South Gilbert Street across from the softball softball diamonds. So we're doing some future planning. This will help us so with the response on that part of the the city and into downtown. And then the second one is the relocation of Fire Station Three from American Legion, from Lower Muscatine Road, I'm sorry, to the American Legion Road. Again, this will give us the opportunity to just increase our coverage areas and help reduce response times.
All right, the Burlington Street Burlington Street Bridge reconstruction project, again, just wanted to note that the the current five year plan includes the study and and design of the project. But the construction of the product actually would be outside the current five year plan. So more just kind of a a heads up, this is going to be a a long time coming for this product. It's obviously a significant one with the the importance of the Burlington Street Bridge. So again, just a reminder, we're talking multi-year construction, probably in the 26, 27 timeframe.
Good evening. Just again, this is our 40th anniversary coming up. We're working through our master plan, which is about 95% completed at this point. We'll be connecting with some architects to finish up. We've had a couple of opportunities for public input as well as we've had an ADA study, space needs study. As well as we had opportunity early on to partner with UI Public Policy to get some overall community input about the future of the senior center and its usage. So just wanted to touch back on that and we'll keep you updated as we continue to move along with this process.
Okay, two parks and rec projects to keep on your radar screen. You've seen these several times before. The Lower City Park Master Plan improvements, we had a study done about four years ago. Looking at how to better live and and access the river while getting our amenities out of the way of the river. Some of these things have been happening. The new playground has been moved. The Bachi Courts are now have been moved out of the flood area. You've seen a number of plantings, including prairie plantings, but this plan would go further with that raising the roadway up to provide additional protection to the stage and the ball fields. And then the other one is the East Side Sports Complex. On the east side, we had some additional work done on this this year to look at feasibility and look at numbers for it. Community meetings that the baseball community is still very interested in having this happen. It is good land. We've done a tree buffer out there, but this just keeps it on your radar screen for the future as well. That's it for Parks and Rec Projects.
All right, Mr. Mayor Council, that wraps up the presentation as far as the capital improvements plan. We're open to answer any questions that you would have in regards to what we've presented.
Thanks to all of the staff for kind of a marathon through a lot of the capital improvement items. I do want to open it up to, of course, our counselors to ask any questions or make any comments.
I have I have a few comments and questions. The pavement management study, is that available online?
So we are just putting the final touches on that. We anticipate that being available probably here in the next hopefully matter of weeks. I believe at some point we the plan was to have a presentation to council of that report as well.
On on the ridership on the on the bike system. Do we have a a sense of when we we complete these projects? The level of ridership that we see on these bike lanes that are going in? Kent, maybe that's a question for you.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, this is Kent Rolston. I'm having difficulty getting my video on, but hopefully you can hear me. Yeah, we do, John. We actually go out when we do our peak hour counts and we do count bikes that are both on the sidewalk and in street. So we do get a sense of that. It just takes us a little time after those facilities are.
I have a couple of more questions. On the Dodge Street project, if I'm not mistaken, I thought I saw across my 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 desk, so to speak, the the possibility or the study of reverting Dodge to two-way traffic. Am I mistaken on that? Jason?
At at this point, the plan would be to for those to remain one way. I I think there's been some discussion in the past, but I I think at this point, the plan or the plan at this point would be to have them remain one way.
So there is there wasn't any study that was going to be considered for that as a possible?
Not recently as part of this process.
Okay.
We we had done, John, sort of a preliminary investigation. Boy, it's probably been eight or more years ago now that I could dig up and take a look at, but as Jason said, nothing in the in the book, so to speak, for now.
Okay, I mean, I part of part of my reason for asking is I I've had had the opportunity to speak with some neighbors just in a kind of more social setting, but they pointed out how in front of some of the homes along Upper Dodge, as you're coming down the hill, residents have installed barriers basically because of cars leaving the roadway and you know, they're trying to protect their homes with these barriers. So the two-way street, I think, could potentially help with that in in the sense that traffic speeds might be might be reduced. A couple of other questions. On the tree planting, I had an opportunity to sit in virtually on a relief Cedar Rapids discussion, Trees Forever had a symposium not too long ago. I think Tyler may have attended as well. I saw his name. And I have to say, I was really impressed with the what Cedar Rapids is doing there. They're working with Trees Forever. They've also brought in some consultants, including Jeff Speck, to help with the master plan, which would be a 10 month effort as I recall. And, you know, Cedar Rapids is in a much more dire situation than Iowa City is in terms of its tree canopy, but we've lost a considerable number of trees. And I I would say one of the issues that I've I've always felt would help us accelerate our plan and what I sense is what Cedar Rapids is doing is by partnering with Trees Forever, they will be able to have a a fairly robust volunteer component to their plan. And and that's, I believe, if we're going to try to accelerate our tree planting, that would be one component that I think would accelerate it as well as engaging the community and what I think would be a a real strong community engagement effort. So it would serve many purposes to do that. You know, I'll be following the relief Cedar Rapids Relief Cedar Rapids program. I think there are maybe lessons that can be drawn from that effort. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I mean, I'd just like to thank staff, but given the time, rather than getting into a lot more questions and discussion, I would encourage that we take about a 10 minute break before we get into our work session.
Does does anyone have any objections to that? I'm not hearing any. Oh, go right ahead.
You mean, are we coming back to the same thing? Or just we finish now and?
We'll come back to this link.
No, no, I mean, to to ask question, continue asking question to the staff or?
Well, I think we can, that that's up to us. So if you want to continue to ask questions, that's a decision we make as a as a council. If you have a question, I would say, go ahead and.
Yes, is this my question? Yes, I want to make sure if we're done, so the stuff doesn't have to be there waiting for us. Anyway, I I I just want to ask Latasha, is she still here?
Yes, I am.
Hey, Latasha, having you here. I just, you know, my my every year questions, which is the kitchen.
Yep.
Have you done anything about that?
The kitchen is a part of the overall master plan. So it is in it's in the plan. It's set up to be a a culinary kitchen that will be used for classroom as well as for catering. So it is a part of our master plan process. So it is a part of the CIP process here. It's, I think it's a part, it it will be in our second or in our third tier because we have to fix some of those infrastructural pieces for the overall standing of the building. But yes, it is. It's in our priority area for sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
That's it for me.
Right. Any other burning questions before we go to a break? All right, we'll be back at 5:00 PM. So a 10 minute break. 10 minutes on the dot. So see you soon. 10 minutes on the dot, so see you soon.